We'll keep our eyes and up. Right. I'd like to call the city council work session order at 6:00 PM. November twentieth. Um, today we are, we are flipping our script just real quickly. We're going to start with downtown streetlights. We have associate planner NJ Johnson and uh, city engineer Chris Nagelspott to give us a little report. Lights.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you JJ for letting us jump the gun a little bit on our presentation here tonight. So just to briefly go over our agenda for the half hour we have on this topic. Go over a background of sort of how we got here to uh, bring some of these recommendations and questions to you here tonight. We'll do a check in on the styles of downtown streetlights that the Economic Development Committee recommended when we went to them about this. Discuss the opportunities, logistics and challenges of applying for a grant for developing these streetlights. And then lastly, we'll check in and get your direction on where you'd like us to go with this project. So as you all know, with the fifty year plan, we are kind of opening up all of the development code chapters for review. We, just because of consultant time, we have to do a bit of prioritizing. So some of the kind of smaller housekeeping stuff doesn't necessarily get in. But the changes we've really been wanting to make for a number of years are able to be opened up and amended in one process as part of the fifty year plan project. One of those is the downtown overlay code that we've been uh, looking at a lot. And tonight we want to focus on the streetlight sections. So there are some standards that we are, would, would be recommending to change when the downtown overlay code gets amended. The main one being the uh, light source. So right now the standard is metal halide or another white light source. And we would recommend shifting to LED lights. They're just more efficient and they last longer, which helps with brightness, lastability and of course, cost. And so with looking at this portion of the downtown overlay code, though related to streetlights. Staff have been talking for a while about an opportunity to upgrade our, or update our standard to be more of like a decorative light. So this would be a light that has some of the bells and whistles kind of features that you see in a lot of downtowns around Oregon. Uh, Chris found a lot in La Grande and uh, Hood River, you know, streetlights with different features. So this can include like unique lumineers, different coloration for the actual like poles, hanging plant baskets, uh, trashcans. And that you see in Vernonia banner arms with banners that you could put anything you want into. And then flagpoles with flags. This would be kind of like a way to get like a consistent identity through the downtown as you drive or walk through it. And then another one that a lot of people on Economic Development Committee are really excited about is having electrical outlets that we could plug into for uh, string lights during the holidays and have, you know, the whole uh, East Columbia Avenue corridor lit up by streetlights. We have been talking to the PUD a little bit about these uh, particularly like the string lights during the holidays. We've reached a deal with them where they would be willing to, if we just looked up the power demand that the string lights occupy for a month and just to have them on throughout December, they would just be willing to bill us a prorated fee rather than getting the whole streetlight metered. And or the other option would just be to pay for the electrical service for the whole year because they also recommend locking them when they're not in use. That people don't just go downtown and you know, pick their feet back and charge their iPhone and you know, just kind of hang out and use city power. So uh, like I mentioned, we brought this to the Economic Development Committee at the beginning of this year. And they had a couple of recommendations, particularly on style. So if you go to page twelve of your packet, you'll see the lumineer that they recommend. So this is the top portion of the streetlight where the light actually is emitted. It's kind of like, what they really liked about it is it's, it's sort of like a hybrid between like a modern and a historic look. You know, I, a lot of, a lot of scampus is really prideful on its history. But we also have a lot of elements of our city where we're looking forward like, like Omic and the entire industrial park. And so we kind of wanted our downtown to reflect that, that hybrid of, you know, the historic look, you know, it's called the Washington. But it's also, it's got a different model. It's, it's globeless. So all of the, I think it shows better on other pages. I want to get like just the globe. Like the glass. On eighteen, it shows, there's no globe beneath that. There is a like a shield of glass. Um, other cities have implemented this and they, they don't really have problems with like spiders getting in there or anything like that. So they, they, they like that look as, as kind of like a, you know, it's also pretty unique too.
Jay?
Yeah.
Is that, I was kind of going to ask, and then it says minimize backlight. Is that so like people up above don't get lit light up into their face? It kind of emanates down and out? Way that it is since there's, it's not a globe like the old ones?
Yeah.
Do you want to go into that? Yeah, that's right. It's, it's all down lighting. So it's dark sky friendly.
So if there's apartments above it or something, they don't really get light right in their window?
I got to see that glow off of a, off of a glow like you'd see.
The, the modern streetlights are just designed a lot smarter than they used to be. They, you know, they emit light only where they need to, to keep street, you know, streets and sidewalks safe, but not, not be overly um, you know, offensive with the amount of light there is.
I have a question. So speaking of offensive, I see you guys have in here three thousand on the Kelvin. Does that match the other Kelvins for the other lights that we have?
It, it does.
Okay. Really bright, like four thousand is obnoxious. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, the PUD adopted a standard uh, between Columbia City, St. Helens. They encouraged us to adopt the same standard, which is a three thousand K light. So all, all three cities use the same type of lighting.
And uh, just to be clear to this, these lighting would only be in the downtown overlay. Um, so you know, East Columbia and then down to like the stretch on the highway towards uh, and then I think the south, southern limits, the middle school property. So and then uh, another, yeah, so the other features that the Economic Development Committee was interested in seeing is the hanging plant baskets and the banner arms, and then also the electrical outlets, as I mentioned earlier. They uh, they were interested in getting cost estimates. And we sort of discussed that there are development grants that are available for things like downtown improvement projects. And so this, this would be a zero cost to the city in terms of what features we do and don't include. It would just get picked up by a grant. And then the one other important thing to mention while we're talking about features is that you have to sort of think ahead a little bit in terms of maybe what you want now, but what you could want down the road too. Cause once you put up a light pole, it has a certain thickness and width to it that sustains a certain capacity for features. But if you wanted to add more, it likely wouldn't be of the thickness and width that you would need to add more. Unless you were to kind of do like a, you know, that they could put it, they could install all the holes that you would need to exchange features, but you would have to remove one in all likelihood.
Now these, the, the, the cost says full assembly of poles. Does it include the pole itself?
Yes.
So you got quotes or we're looking at those poles that could have, you know, those peat parts put on them. You buy a big enough pole that would take everything that we want to put on it from the canyote baskets to the pole of flags. Um, and they asked you to get a quote on some of those and you noticed price on those poles.
Yeah, so I, I, I have them, I have the prices here. I, I had to sort of collect this and it didn't have time to put it in the packet. But prices for uh, if we were to do eight, you know, in that stretch from the highway to Third Street, Northeast and Southeast. If we were to do a full assembly of all the features of eight, it would be between thirty-one and thirty-three thousand. And so that's about thirty, like four thou, you're looking at like four thousand per streetlight. Um, and we've found grants that are, two that we think would really be uh, achievable to write and get from uh, different entities. One of them would be fifty thousand and one of them would be five thousand. It would be looking at well within our limits if we were to go out for a grant like this.
And going with the lower end pole that can't hold as much isn't saving really anything, especially when you're getting it paid for by a grant.
Yeah, exactly. So like just to give you an idea of some of the features, so like a flagpole holder, you know, and this is, this isn't necessarily capacity. This is just like the actual thing you stick on. Uh, you know, it's a hundred forty-four dollars, you know, installing electrical outlets is only a hundred fifteen per pole. So again, when you're looking at the context of a fifty thousand dollar grant, it's not, it's not really moving whether or not we could get it. Um, and the, the grants that we're looking at too, they're not, they're not competitive. You still have to be approved for them. But they're quite, they're, they're giving away these grants to uh, hundreds and hundreds of cities across the US. So like a lot of people are going to apply for them, but there's a large pot of money available.
Yes.
Questions? Um, so in terms of the outlets, um, would it be possible to leave a few of them available year round for like electric bike charging? And that, you know, or if someone needs to, I don't know, charge a cell phone or maybe not leave all of them open. But I would like to see a couple of them open because we're going to get that, they're working on that stretch to St. Helens, right? That's twelve miles. I don't know what the distance of a electric bike is. And if we've got the industrial area and Omic, you know, encourage that. So that would be.
Yeah. The uh, the, the only, I, I think we certainly could. The only thing is that would, it would open up our bill to the PUD to be year round rather than just the month of December. So we, we'd have to pay for a power capacity. And the other thing that it's less defined in terms of what's being charged, like a, an EV bike or whatever would be a lot more power than a, a phone charger, for instance. And so we would kind of have to pay for the high end of the power capacity. So that, that's something to consider.
Is there a way to look, having um, a few wired, one or two wired and, and placed there for a later use? That if we later decided we can put a little thing there to charge bikes or to charge, but on it, so it's can be done later easily?
Yeah, on the existing lights, like the ones that NJ is talking about retrofitting, it'd be a little bit challenging just because they're already, all the wiring is already set up for those. You know, we could certainly look at um, how they're wired and where it might make sense to add and meter them in. But since a lot of them are collected up and there might be three or four, five of them on one, undo it. If you were to add a, a meter, we'd be metering all of them. Um, but on new development, we could certainly um, look at, at one off, we meter one pole. Say on the corner across the street when that block redevelops, new lights like this go in. Could do, we could designate a pole and meter it specifically for that purpose. So it'd be a little easier.
Maybe wire it to where you would be able to handle a bike charger down the road?
Oh, certainly. Yeah. I mean, the capacity is not an issue. It's just, it's just a matter of paying for the service yearly. Cause there's like a base, be a base meter fee, kind of like you pay at home and like, it'd be like a standing twenty dollar, thirty dollar a month fee plus. It's the consumption.
Oh, like at the gas station where you put a dollar fifty in to run for, you know, the air and the water for a few minutes?
The laundromat or something. I, I don't know if they have anything like that that the PUD offers. I really doubt it.
Eventually. Yes, Counselor Miller.
Apologies if I missed it. Um, but is the electrical outlet placed towards the bottom where people can reach it or at the top?
Could be. Yeah.
Okay. Good. I've seen them mostly at the top. So that's why I ask.
Some, some agencies I've seen, they have them at low end, up high.
And then when I saw these poles, they're modular. So everything you, you can attach metal things to them, screw in for the hanger baskets or the banners or the flagpole. And you can just take them off. I mean, they're, they're pretty modular.
Yeah, they call those fluted tubes. So you know, like a flute, they have all the holes. So you, you could exchange it, but you would have to know like how many features you want to have at a given time. Or all, you, you could, you know, this, this is currently scoped to have capacity of all of these. And then we could just choose which like, uh, which features to put in.
Do we have trashcans, fixed trashcans kind of along where this proposed improvement would be? Do we have litter issues? Without trashcans currently? Do we need to consider trashcans?
Not that I'm aware of, but we could double check with what works, but not that I've heard. No.
I guess if, I don't know if we would want to look at it as a feature to add on to the light or eventually, you know, just potentially eating some trashcans.
Counselor Santiago, sorry to miss you there.
That's okay. Uh, so just, I don't know if I missed it. So are we just looking at eight of the poles to be assembled? And, and I was looking at the graph and I wasn't quite sure if the dots in the graph on page on page nineteen, if those are the black dots where the poles are proposed to be or where the poles are currently? And that's where we're, it's being asked that we eventually change all of those black dots? Or is it just eight? Cause I heard eight assembly.
Yeah. So, oh, that was loud. Yeah. So it would be the black dots on the map. And I've, I've circled the portion of kind of more of like the main downtown core. If we, if we were to get your direction that you're interested in going further on this project, what we would do is establish a standard that would impact the entire downtown overlay whenever development occurs. And then if you were interested in having staff apply for a grant, we would uh, apply for a grant to get those eight between the highway and Third Street replaced, just to kind of build, you know, a momentum and uh, you know, start to like develop some, some vibrancy and attractiveness of the downtown.
And so with your, um, I know that you have some new figures that uh, in, in the packet, it said forty-five to forty-seven hundred. But that didn't include also the labor. Um, so you're, is there a guesstimate amount? And you, you said eight. So you estimated the thirty-one to thirty-three thousand. Did that also include labor?
We're still, we're still looking for, we're, I'm still doing work to get costs for an electrician to come out and install them. But you're right, they would be separate. And we would, we would likely, we're trying to leave a little bit of room in the fifty-five thousand that we have for grant capacity to cover some of that too.
Okay. So basically if they get the grant, then that, that would pay for the eight? Full assembly. Okay. And labor?
And then when those other remaining to, you know, to the east and then in the rest of the entire downtown overlay, which is not, it's not just East Columbia Avenue. At, at that point, it would be, it would be on the developer unless we were to pursue future grants and kind of do like a phase project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to, while we're discussing the grants, just to go over what that would look like a little bit. So of course it would take some staff time to apply for these. One of the things that the larger grant requires is having, or having shovel ready design plans. So we would, we would have to, you know, hire someone to, to put those together for us. It would be a pretty simple plan to put together, especially because all of the conduits are already in since we're replacing them in the same location. But um, they, they do require those plans when you're applying for the application. Um, the other thing it would require us to do is we would have to con, contract with an electrician going forward for ongoing maintenance and replacement. With the LEDs, like I mentioned earlier, they just don't go out as frequently as some of the older light bulbs do. So it wouldn't be as much of a cost as, as we currently pay. But right now, we have an agreement with the PUD where they come and replace them. But in discussions, the PUD has been unwilling to replace these uh, different models of decorative lighting. Just because it's, it, it's really just about what they have to store on their site. And if they have to carry all these different types of lights for all the different cities they serve, it's, it just puts a burden on them that they're not willing to do for us. Then like I mentioned earlier with the lights, if you were interested in going that direction, we've worked out an agreement with the PUD where when they bill us for power, depending on how long or how much of the year we would have them available. It would be uh, they would have a prorated bill rather than having to install a meter. And then, you know, if we installed eight in that, you know, section closest to the highway, staff feels that it could kind of like get this new look going. And you know, that would be pretty much the capacity of what the grant could offer.
Do we have a local electrician on staff now or that we, we use for most of our stuff?
Are there any questions? I think now's a good time to pause for questions.
I'm looking at the recommendations. Is there a big difference between three and four?
The big one would just be whether or not we wait for the conclusion of the community branding project. If, if uh, we want the downtown streetlights to really be a way that we implement the new brand, it would probably be wise to have, to wait until the completion of that project. If we are comfortable with them being more standard, I would probably recommend that we get going on the streetlights, uh, whether or not branding has been completed yet. But I mean, if you, you know, if, if they're going to have like paint, you know, painted trees and not just be one color or whatever, whatever uh, vehicle you use to implement the brand, we'd probably want to wait.
Do you see in most of them are black poles?
Yeah, Chris, Chris has done a lot more looking than me.
I think mostly black. I've seen some brown. See they're black.
Have we uh, checked what Sandy has done?
Um, I didn't go out there, but I can.
Ben?
Like to wait till it snows first though.
That's just a tribute.
And I guess I'm not, how would, how would branding affect it? Like the styles aren't that different, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, so like it would, it would really be only if you wanted to get like really creative and like paint, you know, if you wanted to paint like a, a tree and clouds on, on these like for outdoor, you know, it, it'd only be if you wanted, or like waves, if you were like a coastal town. It would only be if you wanted to get like really, really specific that you would want to wait, in my opinion.
Got it. I um, yeah, I mean, I think I'd mean, I'd mean towards not waiting. I mean, we can always use banners to implement the branding and attachment. So.
It's a really good point too.
The only thing I would see is if we were really going high tech, you know, with Omic and twenty-second century and a look otherwise, these, these fit just about any brand, like you said, with the signs and the banners would make the difference.
Be all for, you know, wifi, getting off of them too, but yeah.
We can attach speakers.
Yeah.
Attach speakers for music. Jeanette or Counselor Santiago?
I, I like your, your idea of what you propose uh, uh, Mayor Backus about the innovation and, and Omic. And I'm not sure if it, that has even been explored about our lighting or something that they can uh, maybe help with the efficiency of the cost of lighting or I'm not sure. Cause they, they can do so much. Um, and I think we, we even thought about partnering up with Omic and kind of going that direction about innovation created maybe more innovative city since we, they're in their backyards.
Yeah, for sure. Um, on the, on the branding thing, when, when Paul Fitterich presented some of the ideas of the, the directions that this community could, could go for the brand themes, uh, high tech innovation came up, you know, as, as one of the stronger ones. At the time, EDC sort of just uh, discussed that Omic, Omic and high tech innovation might be our future, but it might not be where we are right now. That was, that was just the discussion that happened on the EDC level. And then for working with an organization on the lighting, we've been working with Holofane from Acuity Brands. And, and they've been in this industry for what? Thirty decades and decades? Yeah, century. Okay.
And decades. And have you seen, I mean, in your studies, most people are going with a light similar to what we're looking at. They're not going with a really fancy up to Cobra that's really um, new age. I mean, most of them are still.
Really in the downtown core.
Yeah, downtown.
Yeah, not, I mean, we're doing Cobra heads everywhere else as a standard now. Lighting is just so much more efficient. Gets it where it needs to be over the road. And the aluminum poles, they just last forever. I mean, we had, we had a mix when I started here of four different types of poles and uh, and lumineers. And all, you know, the lighting of course was all different. So all of the local streets with all exceptions, uh, all have the aluminum Cobra heads. Downtown area is a little bit unique. It's, this overlay is, it's on the west side on first over there. It's here on East Columbia and it, and it kind of stretches around. It's, it's kind of a big area. But I think what NJ is talking about is just having them be kind of more on East Columbia. Uh, and a little bit down Second Street here, just to, just to kind of accentuate that area. A limited amount of money. And um, they're very similar, you know, except they're globeless and the top is solid versus here. It helps with that down lighting. So.
Um, how many different lighting styles did the EDC consider? I like what they've um, put forward as the recommendation and I, I personally do prefer the spiked top look. But how many did they look at in total to get to this?
I can't remember exactly. I know, I know we had a representative come in and show them, like they were putting them out on this table. There was at least, there was at least five that they looked at. Um, and then, you know, they got to kind of walk over and, and really like look at them. And uh, she, she brought in a lot of good examples of models of kind of what cities are, have been doing in the last five years when they're updating their standards. So we're, we're kind of getting that like modern look.
How different would you say like the range of options were? Were they quite different or just kind of subtle nuance difference?
The biggest, the biggest difference between the alternatives is just whether or not you want the globe around it.
On a recommendation, are, are we recommending then the style at this time? Or are we recommending something, but we can kind of look at the, the top? Um, still, whether we do a one or a two, I mean, are we deciding everything?
I'm certainly interested in your feedback on the recommendations EDC put forth for the style. But what it, what I'm really interested in for just tonight's meeting is whether or not counsel feels comfortable with staff spending some time and resources on going out for a grant to get these installed.
Yeah, I definitely believe um, we could put some time and staff time into looking at this.
Do you have a question since this is an EDC project? Did they consider talking to Comcast or Xfinity for the like community mesh network and the, the hotspot? Was any of that even considered? Cause they do usually hang that equipment off of things like these poles.
Not that I'm aware of. And I, I put just, just to be clear, like we're, we're talking about, we're talking about these poles, not, I meant to mention this earlier, but we're not talking about these poles with the, the utility lines.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I just, I was curious. Um, any, anytime um, we can embrace technology and connectivity, um, if there's an opportunity to do that, I would hope that we, we would at least have the discussion.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I can look into what that would look like.
Thank you.
Right. Um, time's up. So what do we um, want to continue with a recommendation? Can you look at number three and continue and, and put some staff time into it?
Certainly.
Work. Right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Moving back, moving on. JJ, we saved the best for last. Guys. It's, and now we are joined by JJ Durn and um, there's a little proposal on a scampu summer outdoor Palooza.
That's right. Thank you uh, uh, Counsel so much for making the time to see me this evening. As you know, I have been uh, putting on the free movies in the park now for, this will be our seventh year, I believe. A very popular event. We typically get between three and four hundred folks that show up for that. Last year we did our uh, first Earth Day celebration and Last year, we did our, uh, first Earth Day celebration and we had, how many? We had 350 bags and more people than we could give out our swag bags to. Um, also very successful event. My background, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming you all know, but I, uh, worked on the air and radio in Portland and Orlando, Florida, and also had a national show with Clear Channel, was a TV show. So I've done thousands of events as well as write comedy. So I, uh, feel very comfortable in this realm and I have the time to actually help make our community better. You know, in addition to working very hard to get, uh, the superchargers put into place along with getting our other charging stations by the library. Um, this is something that I'm very excited about and passionate about. And, uh, basically the idea is that we focus on the outdoors and all the great benefits that the city of Scappus has as the entryway to the outdoors and so many opportunities. And in doing that, then we work with various sponsors. Um, if I reached out to Next Adventure, they're very interested in participating. Um, but I would reach out to REI. I'm working with the Audubon Society. Had a great time at the Wild Arts Festival this past weekend and talked to a number of authors that write nature books, uh, including children's nature books, hiking books, um, exploratory books. Actually met a gentleman who, uh, years ago used to sell, uh, used to deliver Domino's Pizza in the Columbia County area. And he has written, he's got a publisher now and he's written a, a bird book about 99 popular bird books, about 99 popular birds in Oregon. So, uh, we've got that. And then we've got a number of activities that we would do, including an all-day nature show, uh, art show for kids where children could either bring in their arts, art submissions before the event. Or the day of, we would have a table with art supplies where children could create. And then we would actually have that be a juried show for the kids. We would also have live entertainment, including Aaron Nigel Smith, who's a Grammy Award winning, uh, nominated artist that has performed at movie nights that the kids love. We would have booths like Campfire Stories booth. We would have Boy Scouts. We would have all, we would have Fred Meyer showing up with, uh, you know, different outdoor things. And also, uh, we would reach out to family, what is it? Family Fun RV in St. Helens. They want to participate. So I recommended, uh, that if they're sponsored, they could bring like a teardrop camper. People would look, but also having demonstrations about how to do stuff in the outdoors. You know, I'm an avid outdoor person. I know, uh, the mayor is, and I'm sure a lot of you are too, but not everybody is. So having informational, uh, demonstrations like how do you set up a tent? What, you know, what are great sleeping bags to get? We would also have Chip, uh, from the, uh, OSU Extension Office talk about, uh, wildlife gardening so that you could actually plant, uh, shrubs and flowers that are very, very conducive to helping wildlife, hummingbirds and, and those type of things. We would also have a, I thought it'd be really fun to have a little, I call it the kitty fishing pond, where kids would be able to fish for toys. Um, we could get Smokey the Bear from the local forestry service to come out. And we would also work with the, uh, the Scappus firefighters to actually have like a junior firefighting training schedule for the kids to learn about fire safety, which I think is so important right now. You know, and this is a lot of work, but we've got some really great people on board. We've got Scott Birch. We've got Christine Turner. Actually, we had a meeting today and came up with a list of sponsors that we are very confident that we can get. Um, of course Jeff, having Jeff in there is an integral part of it. And also really, you know, essential to, in my opinion, to the core of the, you know, the library, just educating people about different things. But the outdoors is just like one of those really important deals. So that's the short end of it. I did give you a proposal. If we can, if, if you decide you want to move forward on this, which I hope you do, we have time to go and get real sponsors and to get grants from Fred Meyer. Because typically like, you know, Fred Meyer and Bymart, I've gotten, uh, I've gotten a grant from Bymart in the past. And so you have to apply for that, but doing it now ensures us to actually make that happen. I'm sure we could also get Les Schwab, who was also a participant in Earth Day. And you know, I, Dave actually was at the parks meeting, made a really couple of good points. One was he wanted to understand the difference between Earth Day and Scappu Summer Outdoor Palooza. Well, Earth Day is all about helping the earth. And this event is all about enjoying the earth and enjoying the outdoors. And I just feel like Chapman Landing is a birder's paradise. I actually had Micah, who is the backyard yard coordinator for the Portland Audubon Society, come out last month. We toured Chapman Landing. We actually went down to Scappus Bay and, uh, talked to Next Adventure. And, you know, he was really excited about wildlife habitat restoration that we can do throughout. Um, so I just think there's some amazing opportunities here. We would, uh, request that somebody like Next Adventure would have a kayak that we would give away. And we would basically have a free raffle. So, so like with other events that we've done, we would set up boxes where people could enter to win. And then the day of, we would, you know, pull that raffle, but that also gives added value to the sponsors that are participating. Oh, and I have thousands of Facebook followers. So, uh, social media would be very effective as well as a couple of really well-done billboards.
Kim, now I just thought you would do the mushroom picking booth.
Oh, I love that. Oh, oh, and, and Cindy Eads. I don't know how many of you know Cindy Eads. I ran into her at the, at the Audubon while she's, she's on it. She's going to be heading up the, the Kids Nature Art Show. So I'm really excited about that.
Don't give up your secret spots.
That's right.
Also President Grayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I took some time to look through this proposal and I do share the same sentiments that, um, Dave Sukas shares in terms of the differentiation between this event and an Earth Day event. I think that this is really an excellent sort of, um, celebration of our role in terms of the earth and what we can do in our community. I think that, you know, we came to this point at, you know, with this large event over the last three summers where we had the idea of the Adventure Fest. We were bringing in, you know, Next Adventure and other sort of like axe throwing and activities. And yes, we were not capitalizing the best that we could on our local, um, opportunities in terms of outdoor resources. But I'm just, um, I'm a bit concerned on the, uh, on the longevity of this sort of scope. Like, so what does next year look like? Is it the same sort of earthy kind of nature embracing sort of event? Um, we had talked about in general, we were hearing from the community and kind of the sentiments on council that in general, people were just looking for, um, a moment in the summer, kind of a summer fest. Just listen to music, um, be able to, you know, have something, uh, to drink, a, a food cart that normally isn't in the area. And I'm not really seeing, um, that sort of blend. So I'm trying to grapple with this proposal and seeing its excellence. But also the fact that it's not really going in the direction that we were hoping to take sort of a summer fest on from the future. Um, so those are just my, my personal sentiments and we can work through that. I think it would make an excellent Earth Day. Um, I'm just not quite sure the sustainability in this sort of, um, plan for an ongoing summer, summer fest or summer celebration in our community. Um, the second part was the original proposal has a $10,000 budget. I think that we need to be very clear in defining that this is not a city, um, hosted event. This is a city sponsored event among other sponsors and other grants that are being written. So any grants that are being written is not on behalf of the city of Scappus. We are just one entity in providing funds for this event to happen moving forward. That was something we agreed upon as a council. And if that looks like us agreeing to saying, here's $10,000, do with it what you will. That's kind of where we decided at last meeting, my understanding was sort of moving on that way. Um, but then I saw a second proposal for an additional $10,000 for, um, actually paying people for staff hours. Um, and that was a bit concerning to me because as a council, we were looking to move away from paying an event, uh, company their time to put on an event. And so we were looking just to sponsor something and actually just getting, um, you know, the actual, the actual content of it, not paying staff hours. So I just had a quick question. Hopefully Isaac can answer it. There's a proposal for $10,000 on a much smaller scale event. And I'm curious if you know the numbers of what we paid in the past in terms of paying Treadway, um, their staff hours and what that really kind of equates to as an hourly rate, um, at this, this smaller scale event. Um, cause to me it seems, um, a bit much for what the community is getting out of it. We're losing a lot of that late night live music or the beer garden or the kids' activities with, um, rides and, and bounce houses. So, um, again, I know the scope is different, but Isaac, I don't know if you're able to answer that question.
Actually, Isaac before does. If I can just make a couple of comments, Megan.
I was actually hoping Isaac could answer that question real quick. Thank you so much.
Sure.
So, so per hour is hard. Cause I'm not sure how many hours there are going to be here. But with the, if we're looking at just the, um, like event coordination costs, let's call it, so the cost of the coordination team, whether that's Treadway or Community Group. So Treadway was 23,000, um, per hour is hard, but I can tell you per attendee that they were about, um, that's about $3.58 an hour per attendee for Adventure Festival. The 6,000 or so folks that were estimated to be there. If you're looking at the full budget, um, the fully loaded expense of the 123 we paid, so that would be the 90,000 budget offset by the sponsorships. That was about $20 an hour per attendee. Um, for this budget, it's going to be, 10,000 is going to be about $20 an hour per attendee, assuming there's 500 attendees. I don't know. We haven't seen any projected attendees. And then for the, if it's 20,000 for the whole event budget, it'll be about $40 per attendee. Um, so I don't, I don't know if that comparison is useful or not, but I think I'd have a hard time on the, like a per hour rate. But I think, uh, maybe a per attendee rate might.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that.
Anyway, um, so we actually do have some options for food. Uh, one of the things I've been doing is reaching out to the community to find out what's important. One of the ideas that we had was to reintroduce the sauerkraut sandwich. That seems to be very popular. Um, we've reached out to Community Club and some other folks. So if you wanted to do that, that would be a, a real option. I would recommend for a food vendor, more of a nonprofit. So at that point, um, either working with a service club that would provide the food, or, you know, the Elks or somebody like that. We wouldn't do a beer garden this year, but this is all year one. So having done thousands of events professionally, what I find is that if you start small, you can always get bigger. And I'm extremely confident that we're going to raise close to 20 grand based on what we're projecting right now. We have been able to do events on a very, very small scale with the movie night as well as with Earth Day. And to also differentiate, you know, it's interesting. When I worked on the Earth Day, uh, celebration, which obviously I volunteered all my time for, we had very different sponsors than we did for movie night, which was kind of surprising to me. But it was like, so for Earth Day, we got Western, uh, heating and cooling because they had heat pumps. We had Starbucks. They're very, very much into Earth Day. We had Les Schwab. We had a number, we had John L. Scott. And so for them, Earth Day was more about saying that their business is all about supporting nature. Whereas this is really about getting companies that have nature-based products that also want to, uh, to, to educate and, and get people excited about the outdoors.
I got a question. Um, okay, when you're talking, I mean, we can throw a lot of numbers. I know if, if, I mean, we spent 90,000 out of our budget for 6,000 people. It's about $15 a person. If she spends 10,000 and we get 1,000, that's 10 bucks a person. So, I mean, we could, you could throw numbers. We have no idea how many people are coming. We don't. My question is, um, your total budget here is $20,000.
Correct.
Now, if you raise $10,000, does that come out of the cities, um, you know, the amount that we give you? We might come up with just a set number of $10,000. Would then the 10,000 you raised, you would add that to it and there's your $20,000?
Yes. I mean, I'm, I'm totally comfortable doing that. I think, you know, I think part of it too, to just kind of consider is that if, if we go that route, you know, the advantage of having the city put up 20,000 is that we raised 20,000 and then we actually have a decent fund for year two. And I think Megan made an excellent point. Year one is very different from year two. And so what you have to do is you have to think about what you can actually get accomplished in year one and have really high sat, customer satisfaction as well as a lot of fun for people. And then there are always opportunities to expand in year two. And fortunately, having done these other events for years now, you know, we've got a great reputation. People really enjoy what we do. And so having something that's very fun and very interactive, um, you know, we would have some kind of, we were talking about a bouncy house. We were also talking about some different stuff that we would do for kids. But it's really about having live music the whole day and then having demonstrations about all of these great outdoor products, which would really elicit really high-quality sponsors for that type of event.
Jeff?
I'd have to say as from the library's perspective, is if we can't get our finance money that we're putting into this guaranteed, we're out. Cause budget is not large enough to stand about paying for an event of this size. It's a real struggle financially to do Movies in the Park and Earth Day already. It taps, it maxes our budget out. Our entire non-personnel budget for everything the library does is 150,000.
And the, the mount here for the teen temp, teen temp and exit, that's kind of, so that allows the library to plan this. It takes, allows you to go off and, and schedule it and talk to people and plan it and do kind of the, the planning organization group.
Without the extra hours, I would be able to.
Councilor Miller?
So correct me if I'm wrong, but we are tossing around contributing 10,000, right?
I think we're looking at being, uh, from what I'm feeling is we would be a sponsor and that would be about it. And I'm sensing that they would like us to be able to, I don't know about front them, but cover it. Um, knowing that our max amount out of our pocket would be a certain amount. If they were able to get some sponsorships back, um, and have some seed money for next year.
Yeah. So at what point do you, cause there's other things that you want to do here. So at what point do you draw, what is the date that you decide all your funding and then you decide to make your?
That is, that is an excellent question, Tyler. So, so basically being able to start now really gives us the opportunity to really go after corporations like REI and other companies to get funding. I would say by March, we'll know, but maybe even sooner. So we're also planning on going to the sports, uh, the Sportsman event, which actually has a number of vendors that, um, are doing cycling and doing outdoor things that aren't hunting. So, but, but there's nothing really like this. And so we would be able to cherry pick sponsors from that as well.
Well, I'm just really curious what your date is though, um, that we need to know how much money or that you need to know how much money you have to, to play with here.
I would say, I would say by, let's see, I'm trying to think. So we're going to go to the boat show. We're going to do the sports. We're going to go to the Sportsman show and, and look at sponsors there. I would say by February 20th, we'll, we'll have, we will know. And we should know sooner. I mean, I'm really surprised at how people are responding to this.
Jeff, does that give you any comfort February 20th?
Um, I think we'd need to know earlier just because of the advertising kind of. Cause we'll have to reserve a billboard and so on and so.
We should be able, I mean, I don't think during the summer, it's going to be that difficult to reserve the billboard. I mean, working with Lamar in the past, that has not been an issue. I mean, I've called him two months or a month in advance for stuff, so.
You have a lot going on here in a, in a good way. But that just means a lot of time. So I, and a lot of logistics there. So I'm just curious. I think it'd be helpful also. I mean, I guess we're getting into the weeds here a little bit too much.
Well, understand, understand that, that every week when I worked on the air, I was doing like between five and seven events every week. And, and some of them very big, some of them small. But at the end of the day, there's, there's kind of a science to it. So, you know, it's really about coming up with a great concept that people can get behind and get excited about and then execution, which I have done.
Councilor Grayson?
Um, yes, it's not lost on me that we definitely are very appreciative of this community group stepping in to. appreciative of this community group stepping in to take over this event. You know, I think all of us were really noticing that the cost that we're going into these big events was a lot, but again, they were more large-scale. And I think that I need to be humble in my approach and of course allow this group to sort of, you know, do what they feel is the best for our community because they are the ones volunteering to do it. Um I guess I just, I'm curious if this is sort of long-term. Um I don't sit well with the name Palooza, so I'm really trying to focus on letting that go. Um but if this is something ongoing, like people, you know, like the sauerkraut festival, like a summer fest, um that this is something that they would expect every year. They would expect to see outdoorsy things. They would expect to see nature experiences. They would expect to see emergency learning. Or is this just sort of a one-time thing? Or are you going to just continue and build this theme in the years to come?
Uh continue and build, build it on, on the theme for you. I mean, that's really what we do with Movies in the Park, you know? And in Movies in the Park, I was so conservative about it. We initially had a sheet on the gazebo for movies and then we just kind of grew it and and now people love it. And the thing that's really been fascinating is that the companies that I have called, it's like I'll talk to them, I'll go, oh yeah, we've been doing Movies in the Park and like, like one guy goes, oh, I brought my kids to that. They love that. You're the Fotano's lady. You're giving away pizza certificates. And I'm like, yes, that is, that's, that, that is me. But but really, Jeff, Jeff does so much of the the uh, the work that I don't do well, and that's why we're such a great team. But having someone like Scott Birch, who did Wings and Wheels for years successfully, as well as Christine, who is just a, she's great. I mean, we, we came out of that meeting this morning knowing that we can do this. And yes, it would be an annual event. I am passionate about getting people excited about the outdoors. Because if we get people excited and invest in the outdoors, then we have stewards for future generations for our wild places, which is really important to me.
Councilwoman Grayson, you got a little more?
Yeah, just one follow-up. Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned, you know, that you were open to listening to sort of this, this pitch or this proposal. Um you had kind of talked about keeping Treadway on the table. I'm not saying that that's my recommendation. Um I just, Isaac, is there, have you heard from Treadway about their, their interest in continuing to work with us? Or what does that look like going forward? What are our options here?
Yeah, so um as they've stated previously, they, they really are, their business has scaled up a lot more from when they started with us three years ago. And the minimum size of event they're kind of looking at is right around where Adventure Fest was um in terms of building and growing their business. Um anything smaller than that would be a little bit of a hard sell. Um they, they would potentially consider something, but they're still gonna be looking for their same kind of fees. And you know, they, they are looking for bigger production budgets. They're trying to do bigger things with their business. And so I don't, I don't really know that we would, if we shrunk whatever this event is, much smaller than where Adventure Fest was, that they would be that interested.
Unless they made the same amount of money, unless you pay them the same.
Maybe, maybe. They were, they were kind of lukewarm generally. Sure.
Well, I guess I look at it as that is, is if we want to do the exact same thing we did last year with a few minor tweaks, that's one thing. Where it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars and then somebody, we've, you know, raised sponsorships and not, or we don't do that. And then this, and then we look at something else or nothing at all, and this is an option. I do think, I mean, it is the first year. I think smaller might be better the first year and you get an idea if the timing is right. You know, is it work? Um is our location right? Is it too small for a bunch of people? Uh that first year, it's gonna be tough. Uh Councilor Santiago?
I also wanted to add in that the um the Treadway would, wasn't including uh going after sponsorship. Is that correct?
They, no. No, they, they, we did ask them to look, um and they would have gotten a percentage of the find if they had found other sponsors. Um they weren't able, not able to find um companies for a variety of reasons that would be interested in sponsoring Adventure Fest.
All the sponsorships were found by city staff this past year.
Correct.
Did you have a follow-up to that?
No, I was just wondering that I'm, I am for the um I, 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 I think we should, first of all, we don't, it's not a city event anymore. It's a uh city, uh the library event and we're here to say, to say whether we want to support the library and to have a community event. And um and I'm for that.
Councilwoman Holmes?
Yeah, um I really love the concept. Thank you for all the time that you've put into this. And I do think this is gonna be much more reflective of the values of the community and bring a lot more value to the community as well. Um so I like where this is going. I will say the date scares me a little bit. Um what do we do if it's pouring rain?
So so, and that's a great, that is a great question, Commissioner, uh Councilwoman Holmes. Here's the thing. So when we did Earth Day, we had what we called our rain contingency plan. So we reached out to Columbia PUD who were also anticipating being a sponsor for this event. Um and a number of other places to get really big tents. So that if in fact we had rain, and then we required all of our uh vendors and sponsors, if they had uh booths, that they had to be covered. You know, having the meeting room also means that we can also move things in there. The gazebo is covered. So that, that would be the solution to it. The, the other thing that I really like about that date is that it's like a week, I believe it's a week after graduation, but a week before the uh school's out. So I think that that is a very, and and the sauerkraut festival, by the way, was always the third week in June. So I and and from a, being a meteorology nut, um we're in an El Nino cycle right now. So based on that, we will see typically a lot more dry days than we do wet days. So I am reasonably confident that we can do it and have a contingency rain plan that we're able to scale back on.
I mean, you look at graduations the last several years, there has been some rain ones and there's been some sun ones. It is three weeks from the longest day of the year. I mean, we had a, we had the hottest day of the year last year. We had the smokiest day of the year before. There's always something. Um but there is, like you said, contingencies would be good. I would look at it and say, okay, did that, did that week work, having the kids still in school? Or would it be beneficial to move it one, two weeks later next time? Because those are the things. Plus, this is right before summer, so all those people that want to sponsor, want to sell their kayaks, want to sell their bikes, it's the part of the year that is a good time to do it. And I'm thinking, obviously, we're talking Heritage Park, but we'd have to look at going all the way down First Street and having so long the fire, uh along the railroad
Right.
and shops, and then you're on concrete, so you're not walking through the water or the grass.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, you know, I think that, you know, in the past, what uh we've done is we've been able to get picnic tables uh given to us to use from the fairgrounds. So, you know, for us, you know, our strategy is to, is to make a dollar hauler and to get as much free stuff and as much in-kind donations as we can. Because I think the other, you know, the other side of it, like with us doing the fifty cent hot dogs and burgers where I got the grocery outlet to donate the food for that and then having the police department actually be able to cook the food, but was also really a great opportunity for the police to interact with the public. But at the end of the day, people are struggling. You know, you've got uh people, I mean, groceries are double the price of what they were. You know, even a year ago, you've got expensive gas prices. And so being able to have stuff that's, that's free or inexpensive, I think is a real blessing for this community.
Um we need to close up and or then start it over, but why don't we close up and um and then we'll talk about it. It's, it's coming up in about twenty, twenty-five minutes in our meeting when we discuss this more. I'm thinking we're, we're gonna look maybe at a dollar amount. And if we can decide on that, you can then decide, yeah, we can live with that and we can work on top of that and and go from there.
I do have a couple more questions, but I.
Just wanna save that for the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.